Magisk Jockey, so we're kind of in the same boat when it comes to math. Relatively new to Fredericksburg, two and a half years ago, my wife Tina and I moved from Austin. We like to say we left Austin and re-entered the state of Texas and we're really happy to be here. I don't know much about budgeting, although I did take a company public in 1996. I learned something really important about public markets. You are always rewarded or punished by your shareholders or stakeholders. And I recall very well one time when we really knocked it out of the park. We did numbers much better than projected and our stock price went down. And I was like, why did our stock price go down? That's because the shareholders didn't like that we couldn't project. Because if you can't project on the upside of the downside, then you're just not a good manager. Now, in this case, from the numbers, I understand we keep having a surplus in our budget and it's significant. And I think that's good news in this case. And in speaking to our friends, our neighbors, the people we worship with, people are going through very hard times. And looking at the budget, and I know you've heard a lot about what people think is, you know, a golf cart should cost, or a pickleball court, or whatever, but it seems like we probably will wind up with another surplus as keeps happening time and again in this process. So if you adopt this budget, I would plead to you that you consider a lower tax rate because maybe that surplus was always intended as something for a rainy day. And looking at the economy today and looking how people are hurting, I think that rainy day is here. So I plead that you consider your tax rate to be lowered from what it is as proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. Tanya, do you have something new?
I'll try to make this, yes, I did not say this last week, although I did mention one of the continued concerns I hear from others is the lack of response from the council in answering their questions. Why is a balanced budget not the objective? We are not hearing discussion about that priority. Choices must be made. Do you not make those choices with your personal and family budgets? Do you exceed your personal budget year after year? We are just calling for the council to bring back a responsible budget. I asked about six or seven folks who've attended these meetings to see if my impression was like theirs. Turns out, they all agree, the council doesn't seem to give the impression they have a clear understanding of the budget. The city staff is presenting. Concerned voters have expressed houses' struggle to follow the not-so-user-friendly presentation unless accounting is your strength. It appears that there is a habit for some time, years, that the council has taken the city manager and staff data and rubber-stamped it instead of digging into it to see what is the best for the taxpayers and how to balance the budget. To some, it seems like a lot of accounting aims and convoluted maneuvers of moving the figures around. That's just how it comes across. The city has 3 million in capital expenditures that can and should be reviewed for considerable cuts. When we heard last week that cutting a bit less than $700,000 would allow for no-budget tax rate increase, that left us speechless. How hard can that be? The answer was plain, crystal clear, and now really had us wondering why the council would not take the obvious prudent steps to find and make those cuts to resolve the matter. Either you find the cuts, or you find a way to pay for the inflated budget without taxpayers paying for the excess. If you have any expenses that revenues don't cover, you must not put the burden on the taxpayers. Get rid of the essentials. Maybe the right thing to do is to reject the budget given to you by the city manager and staff and send it back to bring a budget that is balanced and realistic. It can be done, and the voters have been asking constantly for you to do that. Thank you.
Jeanette, you have signed up for both this and the budget. I'm going to give you four minutes to do both at one time.
I'm not a financial expert, but I am a mom who has had a budget, had to budget for our family. It is pretty simple. You don't spend money you don't have. You do not spend beyond your means. When needed, we found ways to cut. At times, we have made hard choices between funds and needs. Sometimes government needs to be reminded that it is our money that they are spending. And this money is not unlimited. Over the past few years, my property taxes, as well as anyone else, have increased tremendously. I've lived here 30 years, raised my family, my kids, been an active part of the community, and it's just getting more and more difficult to cut back on our household expenses. So what I, a couple things I just want to bring out today after the budget inherent the other day, that is, one is, the budget, it's so confusing because it's not updated. We don't know where things are at. We don't know what's been added or taken away. But the proposed budget has $11 million in above the revenues. This is a budget that we're talking about, $81 million budget, and we finally found out the other day that all the city needs is like, you know, half a million dollars, 695, to lower that tax rate to the no revenue. When you have $81 million budget, why is that a problem? That's nothing, it's peanuts. But I would go further to say that the budget could be cut much, much more because there are, like I said, the budget's increased 11%. That's double digits from last year. What's the justification of that? If it has, what is the city doing to find the funds for that instead of going to the taxpayers? So it's like a family budget. Whatever's a priority, if that's what you think is a priority, fine, but weren't you making the cuts elsewhere to allow for that? It's unfair to keep correct the taxpayers and raising, raising the tax rate. And I basically called you all to reject the budget, to come up with a responsible budget that's in line with people's ability to pay and is not outpacing the population growth plus inflation. And that the tax rate realistically should be below the revenue, below. And that's what I've called you all to do. Thank you for your time, and I know this is a really hard process, and you're probably as confused as we have been, but you are the ones that direct the city and say, we're your boss, and you are the city's boss. So we ask that you please look out for the people. Thank you.
Jerry, you have something new?
I was on the P on the tax rate, not the...
Okay. All right. Let's go back into regular.
I move we go back into regular session.
Second. Motion second to go back into regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was my timer. All right. Discussion. Consider ordinance 2312 and ordinance adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year October 1, ending September 30, 2024, in accordance with Chapter 102 Local Government Code and appropriating various amounts thereof. Who wants to go first?
So I will make a comment. And I've said this in our workshops, I believe as city leadership, as city staff, as council, is our obligation, I believe, to lead. And in one way, I would like to do that is that we identify a revenue source that's sustainable for the city that is based upon tourism. And that tourism revenue could come in the form of a couple different shapes, and we have to work with our city attorney to figure out the best approach. But I believe that we can add additional revenue to our tax rolls, not on our citizens, but on tourism, simply through stays at short-term rentals, hotels, and others by creating a tourism district. So we're investigating and discussing how to approach that. I also think by leveraging key city assets, like our Lady Bird RV Park out there, we'll talk about here shortly, I think we can do that. Another way we can do it is to help reduce some of the costs to the city. And in conversation with Create Healthy recently, they have proposed to reduce and eliminate all admission fees to the wellness center for police, fire, and EMS in our city. That is not a huge dollar amount, it's a very small dollar amount, relatively speaking to the budget, but I think through creative thought processes, we can find a way to help do this and lower the impact to our citizens, and that's my position.
But kind of, I agree with the fact that we've done a great job getting tourism into town, but now it's starting to cost the citizens a lot of money. In some way or another, we've got to figure out a way, we want to keep the tourism, I'm not against the tourism, we know they do well, and that the people come to town, and we want them to come to town, but we've got to figure out a way, and maybe through the hot tax or other sources of fees, to help alleviate the cost of the additional security, you know, utilities, things of those sort. So I'm very much concerned about us or the citizens having to pay for the tourists that come to town, not against the tourists, don't get me wrong there. But the fact is, is that some way or another, we need to figure out a way to reduce the cost to the citizens by whatever means it may be, and maybe through the hot tax.
Let me speak briefly to the process of setting the budget. I want to highly commend our city manager Clinton and our finance director Krista, and actually all the staff who participate. We start the process, what is it, in June?
May.
May. So May, June, July, August, and here we are into September, looking for a budget year to begin October 1st. I've been in, I don't know, this is my seventh or eighth budget round in my May oral career, and this has been the best in the sense of being able to answer a lot of questions. But also, I know more answers, more questions to ask than I used to do. So Jeanette, it may seem confusing at times, but I'll tell you that this council, in my experience, has done a tremendous amount of homework, maybe not inside the meetings because we like to keep watch on the timing of meetings, but I know that they've all drilled down quite, because I've talked to them individually about what they're looking at, how they're viewing these budget numbers and so forth. The city is impacted by inflation, just like everybody is. Gasoline for all the utility vehicles costs the same to the city as it does to you. All those kinds of inflation things impact us too. That's not a excuse, it's an observation that we pay for that kind of thing as well. To me, the primary requirement of this council when it comes to budget time, this is personal speaking, is public safety. Our job is, the city council, by charter, by law, by personal conviction, is public safety of this community. In this budget, if I'm correct, if I'm incorrect, Clinton, please, or Krista, please correct me immediately. There are two new police officers, there are three new firemen, and four new EMS personnel, and one new trainer, which will increase our recurring expenses, salary, health care, all the things that employees get, plus the equipment and the things that they're required to do their jobs. Two policemen, three more firemen, and four EMS personnel, plus a new trainer, is going to increase our recurring costs about $1 million. Is that roughly correct?
That's roughly correct, Mayor. The majority of what we're adding on the general fund side that continues to impact the budget year after year is police, fire, and EMS, those emergency services.
Right. So those are the things that I know people, just rank and file, everybody will say, we at least want you to do everything to keep us safe. And to Mr. Klein's comment about increased tourism, the application of those resources because of the increased tourism is becoming more and more impactful. So that's our job, is to make sure we have those kind of resources in place, and that means a lot to me. Public health, I mean, public safety, police, fire, EMS, and we couldn't get any better than we have. We just have the best people, the most dedicated people, the most trained people, we just have, everybody should feel really good about the public safety resources that we have, that we pay for. One other thing, dispatch has been a real concern of both city and the county, which is something that we co-fund. And it's been an issue for a couple of, three, four years, I think at least, certainly since I've been re-elected, about finding people to do that. Because the economy in our area is impacted by people who can go to work for a winery or drive a tour bus, or, you know, even fast food is now much more, when I, I don't know, anybody remember when it was a buck and a quarter an hour? And now it's 20, of course, that's 100 years ago. So dispatch has gone up from $409,000 our share last year to something over $600,000 this year because of the need to increase wages to get people to do it, and add shifts, and make sure that 24/7/365, we've got people doing correct dispatch. So that may be some answer to your question as to what is all this increase? What is it that we need that we are spending for? You could go through the budget, any of us and any of you could go through the budget and find some items that you'd say, we don't need that, let's cut that out. We don't need quality of life issues, we don't need, I won't name things because I don't want to be held accountable for it. But we could all find things that we could say, we could do without that. We could do without that, couldn't we? Couldn't we do without that? Is that really something we should be doing? So quality of life is something that Fredericksburg has always stood for in its city budget because it's not, in my mind, just enough to make sure we have the roads right and turn the lights on, water and sewer and the landfill, so forth. Those are important, those are primary after public safety. But there's also a quality of life issue which makes Fredericksburg an appeal for every person who lives here and wants to live here. And obviously, a lot of people do. So that's not my speech that every penny of the budget is warranted, but it is an explanation as to what I've drilled down on in to do my homework. Public safety is first, and that's a big chunk of this budget that's paid for by the general fund. That's my speech. Bobby, or Kelly?
As the mayor said, police and fire emergency services are a big part of our budget. I think it's important that we maintain those. We've been working for the last almost 10 years to get the pay and the benefits for the fire and the police departments where it needs to be. And we were behind for a long time. We are now current, and current meaning that we're competitive with other communities. So we're able to retain our police, especially our policemen, better than we have in the past, and it takes a lot of money. We're only down two police officers right now. We've been, last year we were down five. And it's been hard to find people that want to go into that line of work. And I think we've done a good job with getting their benefit package and their pay where it needs to be. As far as infrastructure, we have some of the lowest rates, water rates. We haven't raised our water rates since 2014, and we have some of the lowest rates in the state of Texas. But it costs money to maintain our infrastructure, and we need to maintain it and keep making improvements, otherwise we'll get behind, and that gets extremely expensive to try to repair infrastructure that's not in good shape. As far as tourism, that is our number one industry. And yes, it costs a lot of money, but sales tax increases every year because of tourism, and that's a big revenue generator for us. We need, and we've had plenty of discussions, or not plenty, but we've had numerous discussions on how to better manage our tourism. If there are ways we could use the hot tax for anything but promoting tourism, we would certainly like to find them and use that money because it is a large amount. This is my ninth or 10th budget to go through. This year was difficult because costs are increasing. Fortunately for us, we've, during the pandemic, we had pretty good, we set records on sales tax, so we had, we were able to catch up on a lot of things that we've been working hard on. So I think it's, we're going to start seeing that slow down. My belief is, we'll start seeing that slow down some because one, the economy and people have other options now as far as travel. So, and the mayor is right, quality of life is something we've been hearing for the last 10 years that I've been involved in council. We need to have good quality of life in Fredericksburg, and that costs money. And I believe we're addressing that in this budget and in previous budgets. So, thank you.
Here's my thinking. Our population in the city has the potential to grow by 50% on any given night due to the 6,000-plus occupancy of our STRs that's in the city alone. We, as a city, serve an influx of visitors, both from tourists and from folks who live outside city limits in the county and use our services, drive on our roads, need our law enforcement and EMS and fire while they're here. And those critical services make up over half of our budget. We can chip away and hope we rely on salary savings to make up for capital costs we defer to another year while we pay more in maintenance costs of old equipment and pay more for the price as inflation and cost of goods continues to rise. Other cities have private foundations that are well-funded to support law enforcement, parks, first responders. Until that happens here, we are doing what we can to maintain services, a safe community with strong infrastructure at basic, decent, and respectable levels. Thank you to city staff who's been involved in this process, working through it the last four months with us. Thanks.
All right, if you are ready then to consider the motion, you have been given the exact language that fulfills the legal requirements. Appreciate Mick's help on this and Shelley's help, and make sure that we state it correctly. Anybody want to make the motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2023-12, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Fredericksburg, Texas, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, in accordance with Chapter 102 Local Government Code and appropriating the various amounts thereof.
Second. Motion second, and this requires a roll call vote. Shelley?
Mayor Victor?
Yes.
Mayor President Watson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rod?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Fox?
Aye.
Motion is approved as presented unanimously. Thank you, council. And we'll move on to the 7B, consider the adoption of the tax rate. Any presentation from staff?
No, sir, but I'm available for questions.
Ready for questions, okay. Clinton, anything?
No, sir.
All right, then let's go to a public hearing.
I move, we go to public hearing.
Second. Motion second from regular session into public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Jerry McCorkle?
Mr. Mayor and council and city staff, thank you for allowing me to speak here. I'm Jerry McCorkle, I've lived here for 22 years. I did speak last Wednesday out at Lady Bird Johnson there. I had two things to add, based upon what I read in the paper about the number of new building permits and the number of new homes that are being built, and the overall assessed valuation going up 22% on residential and some 37% on commercial properties. I think that we need to reduce the tax rate rather than increase it at all. I would suggest that the 1 for 1, 0 point, or .012 be observed rather than any of these other ones that are too high already. According to the paper, we have a surplus in our budget, and I cannot see how we can justify raising the rate at all, rather reduce it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did I miss step one procedure? Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, council, I usually go last, if you'll allow me the privilege of going first on this. Okay?
I have a new phone, sir.
I'm hoping we go out of public hearing.
Second. Motion second to go back into regular session. I'm going to, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I actually really eager, aren't I, to speak?
You're ready.
I'm going to propose the no revenue rate this morning as supporting and using as my justification several factors. One is that we have, and we're in a circumstantial situation of a large beginning fund balance in general fund. Now, remember, folks, I'm not, I'm not trying to be pedantic, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. Adblocker and tax pays 26% of the general fund of the city budget, so it's a piece of a piece. So $81 million is the total budget, that includes all of the enterprise funds for which you pay fees, electric, water, sewer, et cetera. But we're talking about a couple of dozen million, which is significant, but we're talking about this revenue sources that pay for that. 62% that pay for that 20, couple of dozen million is sales tax and adblocker and tax. So we're not talking about 81 million, just wanted to make that point. But we have an $11 million fund balance beginning the year, and the projected expenditures are roughly 27 million, which leaves a, and revenue is 23. We never know what sales tax is going to be. We know that we've been in a period of several good years. There's suggestion now that maybe those good years are over and we're going to be headed down. Maybe. We can certainly watch that to see. But if we are in a decline or in a flat sales tax environment over the next year, that also impacts locals. If we don't have, if the tourism population slows down, which decreases our sales tax numbers, that also impacts people who work in that industry, and they have to pay taxes too, the local taxes. So it's not just tourism come, they leave a sales tax or they don't, and it's a flat projection. It is, if that happens, then it calls on this council, which I have full faith in, to be creative enough to watch those expenditures to make sure that as we go along, we're ahead of the curve on what sales tax brings in. Nobody knows if we're going to have a downturn in sales tax. Nobody knows for sure, that can be a projection, the economy looks bad, you hear this, people tough times, and so forth. But Fredericksburg has a history of weathering the storm pretty well with tourism. I'm not banking on that, I'm just saying that that's the other side of the coin. It doesn't necessarily follow that because we think the economy is going to be challenged that we're not going to have those kinds of sales tax dollars. So it is a risk to go with the no revenue rate, and I understand, I think, the risks. But it's also if we prioritize the public safety parts of this budget and we keep a good handle on, and probably would require us to have more frequent reporting and budget assessments and a more elevated schedule, accelerated schedule. reporting and budget assessments and a more elevated schedule, accelerated schedule and regular sessions. But after the projected fund balance that we received, 11 million beginning, then we have the revenues projected at, I think, pretty conservatively at 23.6. We're looking at expenditures of 27 in the general fund, and most of that is recurring. It's personnel and M&amp;O and capital and INS. That's our, then we, with that amount of money, we decrease the fund balance by about three and a half million, which leaves us with an ending fund balance of about seven and a half million. Now, I understand that this is all on the come. We don't know what's going to happen in the economy, but those numbers satisfy me to be sufficient enough to take the risk on the no new revenue. That's what I'm saying. That still leaves us with a three-month reserve that we have to have, and according to these numbers, leaves us with a revenue at fiscal year ending 2024 in addition to fund balance and addition to three months of one and a half, or almost 1.6 million. Seems to me, I know that every year we go through this and we, we sometimes hesitate to take the risk. The things could go south, and what are we going to do? Well, if we do have to come to make some budget cuts mid-year or whatever, or strengthen the spending, or adjust the spending plan, I have confidence in this group of people we can do that. And I have confidence in our staff that we can do that and look out for the financial health and welfare of this community. I also think that as we go along, I think we're at a time, approaching a time, and this is just a guess, where the things that have been provided by the Fredericksburg City Government for years may need to find other funding sources. And Mr. Riley mentioned one that we're examining, and we've heard some others from council members and the public about finding other revenue sources to relieve what we rely on property tax for, also sales tax, which is also, as I said, it's always a roll of the dice every year. We have a very appealing place. People like to come visit. We have a very appealing place that people like to live. There's a reason for that because the city council for years has protected our financial resources and our services to be the kind of place people want to kind of stay. So with those things, I, that's my proposal, or that's what I support, council, and I'm open to your, your conversation about this. Just saying, given those factors, I am recommending personally that we take the risk of the no new revenue rate this year and step up our game to stay in touch with things, examine all of the budget procedures for next year, look at other revenue sources, and so forth. Anyone else?
So I'll provide a comment here, and I agree with, agree with your statements, Mr. Mayor. The one thing, I'm the newest member on council, and the one thing I am asking for is that we receive, whether it's monthly or quarterly, whatever is more impactful, forecasting from our EDC, from him, if he would, to have a better idea of where we are on course and how we track relative to economic trends, how we're trending relative to sales tax and adblocker and tax. I know that our city manager already does that, but I am formally requesting that. One thing in, in, in looking at this budget to look at the lower rate is we've worked pretty hard on a police retention program, and that would have cost money. It would have cost salary savings from this year, and that was something near and dear to my heart. If you've been in our sessions, I, I advocate for it every single time. So in an effort to reach the lower no new revenue rate, I pulled, withdrawn the request for consideration for police, for our police officer retention program and also the relocation program where I was trying to get first responders to move closer to the city to reduce response times to emergencies. You know, under state law, I can't restrict where they live. So for those two reasons, I pulled those two programs in an effort to reduce budgetary constraints to support a lower rate. And Mr. City Manager, I understand that that's not a reoccurring savings. That's one-time annual savings. But that is my position, and I think part of council's job is to help support the position that we want to support. So.
Before I share my thoughts, can y'all, can staff please show us the difference in revenue between no new revenue and voter approved, what dollar amount? The difference between the voter approval and the no new revenue?
Yes.
It's 502,000. 502,000. Here's some of my thoughts as I've been working through this, and it's not an easy decision because I know this impacts, my family impacts a lot of people. So city residents, 13% of your overall tax is the city tax. Higher portions are coming from the county and from the school district. The legislature had $37 billion at their disposal to help in various ways this past session, and their great work on property taxes only affects school districts. So no help for cities. Something interesting, your net taxes might even go down due to county and school district rates, which are, again, higher than ours and whatever they're proposing. The fun thing about a budget is we do our best to forecast. We do our best to guess at what is ahead, and we have a wonderful comprehensive or capital improvements plan as we go through the needed, needed changes. But we're also in a severe drought, as is most of the state. We've got an eclipse coming, and that could be huge for us because hundreds of thousands of people are descending. I sure hope everything stays in top-notch order, but it could very much impact our infrastructure. Those are just a couple of things. And the terms are kind of out there, so I wanted to make it a bit more personal. As we look at this, I think instead of no new revenue, can we call it kicking the can on needed maintenance, operations, and capital? And then instead of voter approval rate, let's call it not kicking the can down the road. As we determine where on this spectrum we land, let's not make this a political thing. We're talking about $6 a month for the average home price of $450,000. We're not out to bankrupt our citizens, but we can't kick the road down to win votes. So I would be voting for the voter approved rate to invest in the future of our city and prioritize important projects and people to not leave our children with a higher cost.
I agree with Emily. I'm proposing the voter approval rate. It, even though it costs more, the tax, the tax rate is less than, is 25% less than it was last year. Over the last 10 years, we've taken the tax rate from .26 to the voter approval this year is .18. That's a seven and a half percent decrease than last year. We've done a lot of hard work over the last 10 years. I'm very proud of the work we've done in maintaining our infrastructure and some of the things I mentioned while ago. We can't slow that down. We have to maintain our infrastructure. The other is supporting our employees. We currently have competitive wages and competitive benefits, and I don't want to see that diminish. It takes, it took us a long time to get in the position we're in, and we need to continue that, that support. The employees of the city do so much for our town, and there are services that we provide the residents of town that cost a lot of money that we don't charge the residents for. And there are services that aren't provided in other cities, leaf pickup, brush pickup, recycling. And I think it's important that we continue to provide those services. We also, we also have some things that in the future that we need to start saving for, and we can't save with a no new tax rate. We're going to have to start looking at a water treatment plant at some point in the future. Our waste facility is rapidly filling up. We're going to have to start looking at other options there. So all these things, supporting our people, supporting our infrastructure, and supporting our quality of life in Fredericksburg are the three main reasons that I, I would vote for the voter approved rate. Thanks.
Let me, I, I've been concerned about this for a number of days. Got a lot of emails, phone calls, visits. What it really comes down to it in the end is that we need to buckle up. We need to reduce some costs. We need to figure out different ways. So I'm actually at a proposal, you've heard it over and over, that I would like to consider a motion to a tax rate of 0.012749 per $100 excess valuation retirement for the retirement of debt service through interest and sinking fund.
Okay, so that's, excuse me. Sorry. Mick, excuse me. Mick has proposed the interest in sinking first. Is that?
I think that can be handled, those can be, are to be handled separately, but I don't, I think you can do it either, in either order for the interest in sinking rate and then the, it can be done in either order.
Okay, so that motion's valid.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And then the final rate has, requires a separate motion.
So, Tony, just for clarity, on the voter approval rate, that interest in sinking is .012749, and on the no new revenue rate is .012568.
Okay.
I amend that. Which one do you, are you?
I'm voter, no, voter approval, lower.
The no new revenue?
Right, no new revenue.
So that would be this one, if you wouldn't mind on the brown page there, and then we can.
Is this one?
No. Want to do this?
I didn't.
By the book. If you're looking at the debt service, it's .012568.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the tax rate of 0.152612 per $100 excess valuation of the general fund maintenance and operations.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve the tax rate of .012568, which is the interest in sinking portion of the budget. Motion second, discussion. All right, this is a roll call vote. Shelley?
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries three to two. So someone wanted to make the motion on the tax rate.
So that's the first paragraph, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I submit a motion to approve the tax rate of .152612 per $100 of assessed evaluation for the general fund maintenance and operation.
Excuse me, that was, that motion's already been made.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the tax rate of .012568 per $100 of assessed valuation for the retirement debt services through interest and sinking fund.
Second.
Mayor, let me interrupt here. Councilmember Klein's first motion was on the interest in sinking fund rate that was described, and that's what you called for the.
Yes.
So that was the first vote you've taken.
Yes.
And I think the next motion Councilmember Klein made prior to the first vote was on the maintenance and operation rate, and he stated the rate that is for no new revenue in that motion, and that was seconded by Councilmember Klein. So I think you can have a motion on that rate that Councilmember Klein stated second.
Do I have a second vote on the INS rate?
No, this will be on the, on the M&amp;O rate. You've already had a vote on the INS rate. Shelley, that's what I heard. Is that what you took the roll call?
The INS vote was, was the, on the no new revenue rate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've not had, I thought we've not had a motion on the, the rest of the tax rate.
Well, I think Councilmember Klein, the second motion he stated was for the M&amp;O rate, and he read that number.
Oh, okay. So we just have to vote on that?
Councilmember Klein, I believe, seconded that motion.
Okay, so it's a mistake rate?
Yes.
All right, so, Claire.
You need a roll call vote on the M&amp;O rate.
So the, the motion and second was the M&amp;O rate of .012749?
No, sir. That's a .0152612. It might be better to start over because I think Councilmember Klein had, had two motions on the floor at one time, and you called for the motion on the first, you called for a vote on the first motion.
Okay, so that's the, the vote on the INS that we just took, valid, the 1.2, that's listed in the no new revenue?
I believe so.
That's valid.
Shelley, do you have that down as the roll call vote on the interest in sinking fund rate?
I thought I heard him make the motion, the original motion on the INS for the voter approval.
Right.
That's correct.
No. He made, his first motion was for the interest in sinking for the voter approval rate.
74 is what it was. Maybe we better have it. What did you have, Shelley? Okay, if you don't have, because I think there were two motions on the floor at once, so it might be, it might have been confusing to the members on which one they were voting on. It might be better to have it start over.
So it's a proper procedure is to, is to pull the motion, the original motion, withdraw, or?
I still do.
Right.
That's right.
And then whoever seconded can agree to that.
I agree.
And then start over.
We heard different things. That's why I'm confused.
I, I thought so, Mayor, when you called the vote.
Yeah, I thought that he was first starting with the INS and mistook it for the voter approval, which impacts the tax rate.
Yeah, he had two motions pending at once.
All right.
All right, I make a motion, no new tax rate reconsidered for 0.152612 per $100 excess. Well, assessed valuation of the general fund maintenance and operation.
Second. I have a motion and second for the approved tax rate of .152612 for 100 assessed valuation. Any further discussion on that motion? I ran it. Riley. All right, roll call vote.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries the no new tax rate required, requires a 0% increase. And we have a three to two vote, which to me indicates that we have a lot of thoughtful council members. And I'm, I'm persuaded by some of the points of both sides, not that you can be by approval. Shall we move on from this topic?
Mayor, I think you need to go ahead and redo the INS rate.
All right.
Vote because I think the withdrawal withdrew vote motion.
Okay, let's have the second motion on the INS rate of the no new. That would be paragraph four.
74, motion to approve tax rate of .012568 per 100 of assessed valuation for the retirement debt services through interest and sinking fund.
Second.
The motion second to approve the tax rate of the INS rate, which is death, .012568. For the discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Biden?
Yes.
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Hoover?
No. Motion carries three to two.
Mayor, we need a motion now on the entire rate together, combined rate.
V on your brown sheet.
Yes.
So a motion to, I move to the property rate be increased by the adoption rate of .165180, which is effectively 0% interest, or increase in the tax rate.
Second that.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Does that require roll call?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Biden? No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Hoover?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
Mayor, we have to vote on the ordinance.
All right.
You can thank your local legislators at State of Texas for this confusion, ladies and gentlemen.
I take full responsibility, actually. Motion to adopt ordinance number 2023-13, an ordinance setting the AdAlorm property tax rate for 2023 tax year at .152431 cents per hundred of taxable value.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Hoover?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson Watson?
No.
Yes.
No.
Motion carries three to two. Well, it's a good thing we only do this once a year. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're here only for this issue, we're moving on. If you'd like to excuse yourself, that's fine, we'll wait just a couple minutes. Hold on. Was that it?
We did that.
The wrong number?
Oh, the number's wrong? Okay, we should M&amp;O and INS.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you read.
Point me. All right, we need to read. Well, that was your... What was the rating again? .16518, is that right?
Yeah, it's the number, the number just says the...
Okay, so I, let me go back here. .16518, which one is that? So is this INS?
The ordinance.
The last.
Number two.
Okay, so that's 16518.
Yes.
So I submit a motion to adopt ordinance 2023-13, an ordinance setting the AdAlorm tax rate for 2023 tax year at .16518 cents per hundred dollars of taxable value.
Second.
All right, motion second, this is an amendment to the earlier motion. Further discussion? All right, one more time, do we get it right? Okay, one more time, roll call.
Councilmember Biden?
Yes.
Mayor Hoover?
Yes.
No.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
No.
All right, motion carries three to two. Thank you. Council, thank you for all your comments, for your work, for your thoughts. We continue to work together, and I'm not unaware of the challenge this creates. All right, we're ready to go to seven C, consider the approval of ordinance 2314 amending section 24400 fees for use of Lady Bird Johnson Park and Ant Grounds.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Andrea Schmidt, Parks Department. This morning, I'm bringing you a fee increase for the RV area of Lady Bird Johnson Municipal Park. The last time these fees were increased was back in 2020. We do need to go up on our rates just due to general increases across the board on everything, and then also to stay competitive with the current market, which we did research, our local RV parks. This rate will put us somewhere in between, we won't be the lowest and we won't be the highest. We are recommending to stick with our six rates, which we have three in tier one, daily, weekly, monthly, and three in tier two, daily, weekly, monthly. Our tier one are premium sites, so they would be going from $52 to $59 for daily, weekly 312 to 354, monthly 607 to 710, and then our tier two, which are more of our back ends and back end-to-end spots, would be going daily 48 to 52, weekly 288 to 312, and monthly from 562 to 646. This would bring us in somewhere around $75,000 to $100,000. We would not see the full impact of this rate increase until the next fiscal year, since we do our reservations a year out in advance. So, I'll have any questions, or otherwise, we recommend approving the ordinance.
So, so when is that, January 1st?
October 1st, they would...
It is October 1st.
Yes, yes, sir.
Our city, okay, so you don't actually do reservations past the October every year?
Yeah, so right now, so with September 1st of every year, we give our winter Texans first opportunity to make reservations for the following winter, which would be 2024. Then October 1st, we start booking for the following October, and every month, we do it a year out. So a lot of people have already booked through next September, or even next December, their winter Texans, right now.
So, on the winter Texans, we all know there's a lot of, how many do we on the average have out of Lady Bird Park?
So, some, I mean, we may only have 10 to 15 at the beginning, and I think we get up somewhere around 30 to 35 out of the 90 spots we have available. And sometimes we'll have a winter Texan, they may only stay for a month or two months, and they won't stay for the full five months that we offer the monthly rates, because we don't offer monthly rates year-round.
And I assume you've compared it to the other RVs?
Yes, sir. This will put us down in between it, probably more towards the lower end compared to local RVers.
So, we've all gone through an exceptional amount of trips out to Lady Bird, which is always awesome, it's such a gorgeous place, and I'm always struck by how beautiful it is, the amenities, the pools, all the things that are out there. I really look at that as a tier one place. It's city-owned, it's city-supported, and it just has a lot of amenities that I really think are worth tier one consideration. So, I would suggest that we look at the, and again, the tier one is the premium spots, I'm assuming. Would the market bear support of an $80 rate and the tier two of a $60 rate? Would that, because that goes into our general funds, and it goes to the conversation of our budget we just had a moment ago.
Certainly, I think that's something we could do, and it might even make it a little easier being round numbers. Tier one, I like the idea of just going up for one more dollar than what's recommended, because those spots are back-to-back, and maybe not the most private spots that other RV parks have, but our tier one are very nice spots, and I think we could, I mean, we'll have some pushback from some people always when we go up on rates, but I think overall it will be okay.
You're the expert, I trust you on that. I just think it's worth looking at for consideration, again, to help our general fund, so, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for your work on this.
Who, are you proposing a change to the ordinance?
If, if it's appropriate, I'd make a motion to change that from tier one to 80 and tier two to $60 if the council would agree.
I thought tier two was going from 48 to 52, and tier one from 52 to 59.
I'm sorry, yes, that's correct. So it'd be from 48 to 60 then, and then from 52 to 80. Sorry, I mixed that up just a minute.
Yeah, I was looking too.
Would it, are you proposing a change on the weekly or the monthly?
Andrea, go ahead.
We make most, most of our revenue is from the daily rates, so I, I think the other two would be, if we go up too much more on there, we may have some pushback more on that. But the daily rates, these are people that are only staying for two or three nights, and going up a little bit more, I don't think will have too big an impact on them, but will help our revenues.
Is that the majority of the people?
Yes, yes, the majority of our, we do have, like I said, we have 20 to 35, depending on the time of year, winter Texans, and we do have some other people that'll just stay for one month, which maybe aren't technically a winter Texan, but the majority of our uses day daily.
But the one month does provide a discount of some sort?
Yes.
What's that percentage again, I'm sorry?
Um, I'm not sure exactly what the percentage is, but it is a pretty significant discount.
And most of these folks are booking a year in advance, so...
Yes.
They're insulated for 12 to 24 months.
Correct.
So, I, I would make a motion that we accept $80 and $60 respectively on tier one to two.
That's second then.
Motion second, further discussion? On the motion. All right, all who have the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
Item 7D, consider the approval of public work utility fees amendments, including water, wastewater, and sanitation department fees. Chris?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So as you stated, Mayor, this is a look at revising some of the public works fees, namely in the sanitation and water departments. First off, sanitation departments, our solid waste dumping fee is currently $55 per ton. As discussed with council, we have seen a substantial increase over the last few years in the amount of material that, that we're seeing come into the landfill. That's attributed to a lot of things, namely construction projects, but we also think it's coming from outside the county. In an effort to decrease the quantity of material that's coming from outside the county, and some of these large haulers are proposing to increase this tipping fee for solid waste. This fee has not been increased since 2014, so it is a little bit dated. We have compared a number of surrounding communities and their fees for tipping, that's included on page 37 of your packet. It ranges from $75 per ton all the way up to $160 per ton, with an average of about $98 per ton. We're proposing an increase of up to $85 per ton, and again, our effort there would really try to be to minimize the quantity of material and not affect our current in-town customers. We're not proposing to increase the collection rates of $14 per month for in-town customers. As we've discussed with council, we are looking at the future of the landfill, namely, like we had transfer station, and we've had a number of discussions with council in that regard. At that time, we will look at that collection fee, which again, hasn't been increased since 2014, and is one of the lowest, if not the lowest, in this area of $14 per ton. That's our in-town customers. The second part here, I guess before I move on, any questions about the landfill tipping fee?
Yes, what is the difference in the tire disposal? It's, it's put, it's in red on the ordinance. Showing a change, I'm sorry.
We are, we are, sorry, we're not, we're proposing any change to the tire.
Okay, it just says scheduled posted in red, and I didn't know where the schedule was.
Yeah, yeah, no, no change at this time.
Okay.
The second part here is looking at our septic haulers. It's unknown when the last time this was, this was raised or revised, I believe it was about 2008, but I have not found any evidence of that. But essentially, right now, we charge five cents to our septic haulers. So this is material that's coming from septic systems that are cleaned out in the county, any sort of port of cans and haulers that haul that material to our wastewater treatment facility. Again, it's five cents per gallon, we've done, and we've looked at this over the last couple of years and done some comparisons to other cities, municipalities, some municipalities do not take this material, namely Burnett and Leno. It is a material that can cause disruptions in the treatment process. We have not seen that disruption in our plant, so we're not proposing to eliminate that at our treatment facility, but we are proposing to increase the rate. We are looking at two separate rates, one for in-county and one for out of the county. The septic haulers buy their license with the state or are required to have a manifest report. That manifest report says where that material's coming from. So if it's a septic system, or if it's port of cans outside the county, they're required to list where those are coming from. We're proposing a rate of 12 cents per gallon for septic haulers inside the county, material coming from inside the county, and 20 cents per gallon, material that's coming from outside the county. One thing to note, some municipalities do put a limit on this, a limit per day. We, we're not proposing to put any limit at this time, and I'm not sure we accept per day, but just increase, increase the rate. Any questions about the septic caller revisions? The third thing here is including, not revising, any sort of utility rates on the water wastewater side, that is our water use and wastewater collection system rates, but rather just include some additional rate classes. So, we currently do not have rate classes for four-inch residential meters, four-inch or six-inch commercial, or four-inch or six-inch multifamily water meters. So we're proposing to include those as part of our fee structure, because we do have some of those sizes coming online with the apartment complexes, middle school, and a number of other different projects. So currently, utility billing doesn't have a rate class to send those utility bills out for, so this is just an addition of those rate classes. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Chris, do we, do we have the four-inch residential, do we have much call for that? We don't. Right now, the only six-inch residential meter that we have is actually the Mariposa subdivision, off of, or Sunday Circle off of Mariposa. They're, they're billed at a six-inch residential rate class. We don't have anything right now, but I just included it to maybe keep us from having to come back to council at a future time, should we have some sort of development going like that. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chris, this has come up in conversation a number of times about dumping fees, we talked briefly yesterday, and how do we, how do we help separate out of county versus in county, and you kind of gave me a little bit of education, can you kind of share that with the...
Absolutely. So, currently, our permit with the State of Texas, TCQ, for our solid waste, we cannot turn people away that are coming from outside the county. If it's an acceptable material for a permit, we have to accept them through. With that being said, we have looked at and discussed with sanitation department staff, looking at it out of county and in county. If you've ever driven by the landfill, you, a lot of times, there's a stacking, that stacking from the scale house goes on to 1631. That will just increase the stacking distance likely into 1631, if we require some sort of proof where that material's coming from. At the same time, unfortunately, I think some of these people will just have whether utility bill or some sort of proof from another job site, instead of, you know, in the county, that, that shows over time that, you know, unfortunately, they won't be necessarily telling the truth, I don't think so. We have talked to sanitation department staff about this. I think with the increase in, in fee here, and gas prices or fuel prices, I think this will at least eliminate some of the material that's coming from outside the county, just because of the, I mean, if you, if you start looking at the comparison of, of fees for surrounding communities, ours is substantially lower, so it just takes a couple of tons to, to make it worth the fuel cost of driving to.
I just call for two of us. One is the ordinance amending water insurance rates, and the other is amending sanitary land insurance.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-15 as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve ordinance 2023-15 as amended and presented. Any further discussion? All who have the motion say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2023-16 as presented. Second.
Motion second to amend, or to approve, ordinance 2023-16 amending article 18.000 fees for sanitary landfill as presented by Chris and the charter we have. Any further discussion? All who have the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
That stacking from the scale house goes on to sixteen thirty-one. That will just increase the stacking distance likely into sixteen thirty-one if we require some sort of proof where that material is coming from. At the same time, unfortunately, I think some of these people will just have whether utility bill or some sort of proof from another job site instead of, you know, in the county. That that shows over time that, you know, unfortunately, they won't be necessarily telling the truth, I don't think. So we have talked to sanitation department staff about this. I think with the increase in in fee here and gas prices or fuel prices, I think this will at least eliminate some of the material that's coming from outside the county just because of the. I mean, if you if you start looking at the comparison of of fees for surrounding communities, ours is substantially lower, so it just takes a couple of tons to to make it worth the fuel cost of driving.
I just call for two of us. One is the ordinance amending water insurance rights, and the other is amending sanitary land.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. As presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve ordinance twenty-three fifteen as amended. Any further discussion? All of the papers say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen as presented.
Second.
Motion second to amend or to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three sixteen, amending article eighteen point zero zero zero. Fees for sanitary landfill as presented by Chris and the charter we have. Any further discussion? All of the papers, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. For section A, other action items and updates, consider approving the extension of a maintenance agreement with Janicane for janitorial services at city facilities not to exceed one hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. Andrew.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council. This morning, I'm bringing you an extension of our janitorial contract or service agreement with Janicane and the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. We originally went out for bid and council approved funds in two thousand twenty-one to hire a janitorial company. When we did that, we only received the one bid from Janicane, so we gave them a one-year, a one-year extension, which they have fulfilled. They've done a great job, so we are looking forward to working with them again. We went out for bid again this summer, and again, they were the only one that submitted a bid for the for the cleaning of the facilities. This not only includes several parks facilities, including both the swimming pools, some of the shower restroom facilities out at Lady Bird Johnson Park, but also the Market Square Restrooms that could better fund it out of the general fund. We will plan to add them to cleaning the new restrooms and the new facility once it comes online here in the next few months. We're hoping that can happen, so we'd like to ask for approval on extending this agreement. It would be for one year with a potential extension of one year for up to five years, and then we'd have to go out for a bid again.
And you say there's not anybody else bidding?
Correct. We had three companies show up for the pre-bid meeting two years ago, but only Janicane submitted. They were the only ones that showed up for the pre-bid meeting this year.
And is this an increase or?
It's a very slight increase, and we've added a few new facilities, which is why it's gone up.
Only because additional.
For the most part, the increase has actually been very minimal compared to what inflation has been, so we're happy with the pricing. And we did include funds in the budget that was just approved earlier.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve the extension of this maintenance contract as presented. Any discussion? All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Next. A B, consider approving the extension of the agreement to provide aquatics facilities cleaning services to cornerstone pools.
Again, this is another agreement extension. Last year, council approves of funds to hire a cleaning company to help with some of the swimming pool cleaning, not only in-season but during the off-season. Our staff reached out to fourteen different companies to try to get estimates, and this cornerstone was the only one that submitted. This year, with the addition of the splash pad and adding some cleaning services there, we we thought that the price would be a little bit more than fifty thousand, so we went out for an official bid. And again, cornerstone was the only one to submit on this. So they will help with cleaning of the splash pad, town pool, and park pool. It'll be some year-round, including the splash pad, even though we'll drain the lines once we close in the off-season, they'll still need to go out and do some blow-off and just some cleaning to keep it from getting too bad before we reopen next year. So we ask that we can extend this contract for around fifty-two thousand this year. Again, it would have up to one-year extensions again for a total of five years.
Make a motion, we approve request.
Second. Motion and second to approve the extension as presented. Any further questions, discussion? All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue discussion regarding the new affordable housing. Council, I have one update for you, but maybe some of you have an additional comment. I have been talking to the developers of the Mariposa project that is the acreage out, as you know where it is. Asking them if they would consider another iteration of their development other than multi-story multifamily apartments. That that area is designated for residential rural rural residential. And they have been very open to a new setting the clock again on their on their proposal to perhaps deal with something for us to work with them, create something that meets an affordable housing objective. They have, as you remember or recall, approached us to with the apartment complex to extend utilities and annex and so forth. And there has been considerable consternation about that proposal, and we've been trying to work with them on something new. I was glad to hear that they are not completely married to the idea of building multi-story apartments in that area. And that they are open to another development type that would meet perhaps some of our objective and also meet their ROI objective. So we're starting the clock over with discussions. I can't characterize whether I'm optimistic or not, I can just say that I was pleased that they were open to, yeah, let's talk again. Perhaps there's another use for this nine acres than what we originally thought. They were obviously driven by a particular ROI that they were seeking with that project, and and so I was wondering if there might be a way that we could mitigate that some with a city participation that might be appropriate. So my report is that in opening the door of a continued discussion with them, they were. So far, very open to a new idea. We are, as we know, there are going to be a lot of apartments come online soon, which is obviously going to be taxable property. The increased supply surely will put downward pressure on on rental fees. If economics works. And that will increase our long-term rental population and maybe bring some relief to employers who are having difficulty. But also, one of the things that we're going to discuss in the STR amendment, ordinance amendment, is is a provision, and it's just for discussion, it's not in the draft, because this is a public discussion for the council. Is a provision to allow STR owners to go into the long-term rental for up to two years without relinquishing their STR permit. To incentivize them to look into LTR and STR, so that will be something we're looking at first October, first meeting in October, I think. Discussed in the council. And we expect the latest draft to be available today. No?
We're expecting it. We we expect it from the attorneys tomorrow and definitely release to you by by Thursday.
So so we should have two two good weeks to review the the draft and and come to the discussion on October or first Monday. Any other update or comment on affordable housing?
I want to applaud fellow affordable housing task force member F I S D in their recent meeting, working with a developer at a potential PFC. This isn't just a city problem to fix, so I applaud them and admire them for going after what they can do within their own realm of power.
I did notice where the Hayes School District apparently is doing some affordable housing for their teachers, but I think they're looking into apartment complexes in. I don't think that's necessarily what we're looking for.
Anything else? Okay. Let's go to number nine. City manager's report.
Hey, Mayor, Council. I think this first item, we have a guest with us that wants to present some information.
Mr. Rodriguez? Council, he has provided several handouts for you.
Good morning, City Council, Mayor, City Manager. My name is John Rodriguez. I have been before City Council on several occasions in the previous administration, speaking of and urging City Council to consider transitioning to renewable energy, solar and wind, and now I come before you. I have given many examples of other communities who have already transitioned to renewables, such as Georgetown, Texas, and those who are in the process of making that transition, such as Denton and Smithville, Texas, who, by the way, are constructing their own solar plant right east of Bastrop. I have also mentioned a new solar plant being constructed in Myland County, which will be ready to sell solar-powered electricity soon, and no doubt that surrounding communities of Cameron and Rockdale will take advantage of lower electricity rates once completed, since it will power at least two hundred thousand homes. I have mentioned the Kerrville Public Utility Board, along with New Braunfels Utilities, the Dent Municipal Electric, and Garland Power and Light, who together entered a. Purchased two hundred twenty-five megawatts of solar power through four separate power purchase agreements from the Long Draw Solar Project in West Texas for a contract length of fifteen years. New Braunfels purchased one hundred, Denton seventy-five, Garland twenty-five, and Kerrville purchased twenty-five. The City of Kerrville is now providing power to approximately six thousand two hundred homes using solar energy from West Texas. This is a statement from the Kerrville Public Utility Board General Manager, Mr. Mike Whitler at the time, and I quote, "This supports our competitive rate strategy and mission to provide reliable service to our customers at the lowest responsible price." Last year, there was a program called the American Cities Climate Challenge, which provided valuable information on transitioning and federal funding on renewable projects. Just recently, there was another program that you should be made aware of and consider. You have the handouts there in front of you. There's this this program was sponsored by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Monies were being made available for rural communities such as ours, helped them create renewable energy, zero emission, and carbon capture systems, and also helped in the transition to renewables. And you have those fact sheets. There's also a program from the Department of Energy, and you should have that also. As an example, the Austin Independent School District applied for federal grants recently. All their campuses in Austin will have will now have solar panels. Our school district should be considering the same kind of projects. It's our money, it is federal money. Transitioning to renewables will take a considerable amount of time, with many months of gathering information and some estimates mentioning one to three years, which is why we should begin with the commitment from City Hall. I am asking this administration to strongly considerable to strongly consider renewables, solar and wind, as a new power source for this community. I urge you to begin the conversation and invite the stakeholders from this city. For example, the hospital, the school district, the county, the main street merchants, and a lot of residents who are interested in this. And please note in closing that many surrounding communities and their and their city councils that I have mentioned have already made that commitment, except for Gillespie County and Fredericksburg. That's all I have for you today, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. I want I want to make another statement. I think Mr. Klein just mentioned the cost of utilities, you know, the tourism and the amount of people that are moving here. This is another reason. It's all about dollars, it's about saving money. I thank you for your time.
And thank you for providing these data points and articles.
Any questions?
I could add to that, Mayor. I I agree with John, and I think renewable energy is something that you're going to see a lot more of, more communities pursuing in the state. With our population growing like it is and the small carbon footprint that both wind and solar have, not sure how popular wind would be in Gillespie County, but solar for sure. These are things that a lot of communities and communities around us are pursuing, Kerrville being one of them. We've been approached about potentially a solar farm being constructed at our landfill. There are some suitable locations around the county that for for that type of thing. I also wanted to mention, we started talking about ten years ago about a waste energy process converting our waste that would normally go into the landfill into into energy. It's worked on a similar project in West Texas. I think that's going to be reality one of these days, and as we are contemplating shipping that waste out of our community, I see that going to one of these plants one of these days. Again, as we're trying to look for alternate ways to generate energy in an ever-growing state, I think that's something that we're going to see a regional approach to in the state of Texas. Our population is expected to increase eighty percent over the next fifty years, so that energy has to has to be there for that growth. So it's something that we're looking at all the time. We've been approached, and we'll work with John and some of the information that that he has to try to get a little bit of traction for maybe the council to consider something in the future.
Thank you, John. I need to read up on this, so thank you for all that you provided. I'm always a fan of diversifying.
Can I have a quick question? This is a real quick question. I guess I think you kind of alluded to this, but this is a, because it always comes down to money. This is a partnership between interested parties to go make this happen.
Yes.
Just at a very high level, that's it's a shared resource, a shared cost as well, and that's the model.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Council, if I could add just one comment. So I provided a handout to y'all. This is showing the two wholesale power generators that we buy our power from. So LCRA, we buy sixty-five percent of our power from, and AEP thirty-five percent. Just shows the total generation and then the portfolio that they have for renewables within that generation. If you have any questions, be happy to answer, but I just wanted to to point out. And and John, I have a copy of that here for you as well, if you'd like to copy that.
Chris, what was those percentage percentages again?
LCRA.
Yes, sir. So LCRA, they have basically two renewables within their portfolio. That's hydroelectric, electric, the Highland, the Highland Lake generation, that's eight point seven percent of their total generation, and then they do have some solar, which is a little over four percent of their generation.
I'm sorry, what's the percentage of power that we buy from?
Sorry, sixty-five percent is what we buy from LCRA, thirty-five from AEP. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Anything else on that, Council? All right. A B?
Okay, Mayor, Council. This is my monthly update, and Eric, can we get this up? Monthly update on development projects, financial, and then I'll give you just a miscellaneous update. I wanted to mention to the council that I feel like a lot of this information is a little bit repetitive and doesn't change a lot month to month, although this is information we like to provide to you and also the public so that you can see those tax numbers, you can see what developments are happening. But I might propose providing this information to the council on a monthly basis and then maybe giving this update every other month. We'd even talked about maybe visiting with with Tim at the EDC about on that off-month, making a presentation to the council on everything happening in the city and the county coming up, kind of Tim's world. And this is nothing that we've talked to Tim about specifically, but Randy and I have had this discussion. So if if the council would like to change the schedule up just a little bit to every other month, we'll provide the information and work through the presentation a little less frequently.
I don't want it less frequently, but okay, perfect. I will do it every month.
A great learning tool for us.
You bet. You bet. So could we work in the EDC as a portion of that? I think again, I think there's a lot of value to what's being developed by the EDC that we'd like to benefit from.
Sure, I'll visit with Tim, and we'll get something put together and provide that information to the council as well. So jumping just right into development activity in this is showing trends from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three. Again, as we've talked about, building permits, which is on a slide coming up here, and we did see a pretty good increase in that two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two timeframe that was a little bit out of the norm. But with site plans, zoning, flats, you know, we're getting back down to more of those normal levels, maybe two thousand twenty and a little bit earlier. Again, going back to two thousand fourteen on commercial building permits, new construction, you can see how this has been up and down a little bit, overtrending pretty much at the average again this year for those commercial building permits. Residential building permits, there was, I think Mr. McForkel may have mentioned how many building permits are being issued every year. Again, this is something else that has. Again, this is something else that has pretty much normalized, uh, from the spike that we saw in the, uh, 2021, 22 timeframe. We're projected to issue about 50 this year, uh, which has been pretty much the average over the past decade or so. So again, these are single-family residential building permits. Just to give you an idea of the, uh, 1,228 total lots for single-family residential subdivisions, uh, that are on the ground right now, you can see the year approved. You know, a lot of these came in and we, when we have comments about water versus development, a lot of dirt being pushed around, a lot of approvals back in the 22 timeframe. You can see a lot of those were approved in that year. Jumping into multifamily, um, this includes short-term rentals, apartments, uh, also condos and.
Correct.
We have about 70 that have been completed recently. And then moving on, this is a little bit more eye-opening. The, uh, multifamily currently under construction, and this is a lot of what you see going up along Friendship Lane and 16 North next to the elementary school. So 583 units, uh, when we currently have about 800, uh, units on the market since 2019, 100% occupied. That is what is under construction right now. Uh, this slide details the 629 that are approved for construction, uh, but not started. And then again, you can see the, uh, totals right here. So we're more than doubling the apartment stock over the next couple of weeks. Any questions about development?
The one that was above Burger King, is that called Keller's?
Uh, I believe it's Keller Crossing, Keller.
Uh, it, it, it seems like it's been a while since that was approved. Are they holding back because of financials or what?
Can you give me a, give us a status update on that, and if you have one?
I've not spoken to the developer directly, um, as to why they're not moving here, but they, they do have approval, and I know they, we're going to do it in phases. So I'm not sure if the market changed, but.
Yes. I, I can speak a little bit to the civil construction side of things. Um, I know they were looking for some con, some subcontractors, excuse me. Um, and I think the last remaining item is a recon before they can get going. But that's, that was probably two months ago, uh, when, when the developer was in, uh, asking for, you know, recommendations on subcontractors, which we provided a, a number of them that do projects in this area, but have not heard from since.
I know this slide is hard to see, uh, upon the, the overhead, but if you look at September, there is something going on almost every single day in leading into fall, the nicer weather. Uh, the largest event you see there at the very end is the October best setup, which starts on Wednesday, uh, or September 27th, or for that event coming up in October. Okay, we did have this question earlier, jumping into the financial update. The budget for sales tax in the current budget, uh, was just shy of 8.9 million. We've collected, uh, just shy again of 8.4 million, uh, on track at 94.3% of that total budget right now. These are, these are trend lines showing sales tax performance for F Y 2020, 21, 22, and 23. The red line, the heavy red line is F Y 23. And you can see how we've been tracking compared to, uh, previous years, up 5.1% over F Y 22 in total. Uh, you can see the slight dip in August, which is below both the F Y 22 and F Y 21 totals right there. So I, this is nothing that I've visited with Tim about. You know, as we look at sales tax projections over the next year, we're projecting about 2%, or we'll probably end up about 5% um, over F Y 22 this year. Any questions about this or any other information on sales tax that we can provide to the council in the future? I guess. Okay, electric revenues. We had 26 days over 100 degrees in August. You can see that our performance in terms of revenues really increased there. Uh, 13.6 million out of a $14.5 million budget through August. You can see how that, uh, compares to, uh, previous years. Again, broken down residential and commercial, um, uh, consumption versus, um, revenues right here. So revenue is doing very well on the electric side. Moving on to, Eric, I may have, I may have done something here, I can't advance the slide. There we go. Water revenues. Again, starting out the, um, the year, earlier this year, we had a lot of rain, cooler temperatures. We get into a, uh, much hotter period where we go into stage four April 1st, knowing that our revenues might suffer, um, which they have. But you can see again, comparison of 22 versus 23 right there. Uh, that delta that you see on the, let me skip through the revenues right here. When you look at the delta on the revenues, combined commercial and residential, and Krista, uh, verify, uh, this number here, we're looking at about a million dollars shy on, on revenues. Uh, we do have the flexibility. Go ahead, Krista.
So going into the budget season, we were projecting about a million dollar difference, but, um, August we did have a pickup, so I'm looking maybe, um, it might be about 600 to 700,000 short now. Just depending on what happens in September with, with the weather and the rain.
So we, so we have borrowed from, um, our fund balance and the water department, uh, for this shortfall. Uh, and again, deferred some projects, just making sure we're being very conservative instead of increasing rates and passing that rate increase along to our rate payers.
Let me ask you, Chris, from a point I realize with the recent rains, we don't have. But what is our water levels? Have you had a latest update on that?
Yeah, absolutely. At the canal's well field, it's actually been pretty flat. So it bounces between about 98 feet below ground surface to about 106. Um, but you can see that kind of trend line of about 100 to 102. And it's been flat like that for the last 45 days or so. The Old San Antonio Road, um, is, is about two feet lower than it was 30 days ago. Uh, so, I mean, yeah, I, I'm really happy with kind of the way they've stabilized, even though we continue to pump them, you know, we pump the, you know, the wellfields, uh, and, and provide service. We were, we're about 3.2 million gallons a day on average. So, uh, even with the rainfall, it slowed down a little bit over the last week, but, you know, we're still seeing, um, some higher numbers. But with these cooler temperatures, we do expect that to slow down. Beginning of September was pretty warm still. Um, so that average is about 3.2 million gallons a day still. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I wanted to mention to the council before we get off this slide that there is an event, um, on the 21st, Thursday, the 21st, uh, first this week. Uh, Hill Country Water Panel, that's an event that George Tudor put together, um, of a number of water experts in the Hill Country area. Uh, Paul Tiger will also be there, will, the city will, um, have re- representatives there as well. Uh, 7:00 to 8:30 PM at St. Joseph's Hall. Anybody that, uh, wants to learn a little bit more about the water situation, more of a regional look at that, more than welcome to attend.
What was the date that they get?
And moving on to property tax collections, and again, we're very close to our projected budget here. And that wraps up the financial update. Any questions? And again, any additional information the council would like to see, just letting you know. Do you have a sub, Eric? Okay. I'm just going to work, work through these very quickly. Uh, just again, showing trends with police department, uh, number of calls for service time spent and so forth, comparing those, those calls to, uh, previous months. You can see we're up just a little bit. Code enforcement activity, and again, we've broken this out as the council's been interested in what our short-term rental, um, code enforcement activity looks like. That is increasing just a little bit, uh, as are our overall, um, violations through code. One second. And again, this, this is also a result of, of, of tracking this a little bit more closely and, uh, also the efficiency of, uh, code enforcement under our police department now. Uh, so some of these numbers might be artificially high, um, where before we weren't capturing quite as many. They're doing a very good job of, of, of addressing these. Again, going back to, uh, the breakdown, and this has been fairly consistent, 30% S T R, uh, 70% non-S T R, uh, total code violations since January this year.
So, so putting back to the last slide.
Sure.
You answered my question I'll ask anyways, but.
Okay.
We, pretty good jump from April, overall violations of 125 to 222. You're saying that's more administrative tracking versus actual, or we're just doing a better job?
I believe so.
On the administrative side?
Right.
And so just to recap, August, we have a total of 227, 66, or S T Rs, the rest are residents or, or businesses?
That's correct. Yes, sir. And we, we've talked about this slide just a little bit. Uh, Garrett responded this last time. Um, when we really started looking at this last year, um, in the May-June timeframe, it was a little bit closer to 60, 40, maybe 50, 50 on the S T R versus non-S T R side. But again, uh, Randy, you know, this is something that I think we've gotten a little bit better at on the code enforcement side. Nothing against development services, but this is what P D does, is take these kind of issues from, um, you know, the issue to resolution, um, with everything that they do. And I think it's getting a lot more efficient. Taking a look at the, the top 10 violations, you can see at the very top, uh, solid waste violations are at the top of the list, followed by, uh, watering violations, grass and weeds, river designs.
I hate to ask, but what solid waste?
Trashcan violations. Yes, sir.
Lids are open, wheels are flipped around.
Any questions on the P D update? And moving into, uh, Fire EMS, it's a slide we like to show right here that shows the activity. This goes back just over the course of the month. Uh, daily calls from four, a low on the 2nd of August, uh, up to 19, which we typically see a number, uh, about there sometime around the, uh, the 23rd. So an average of 11, I think that's down just a little bit. Uh, overall incidents, you can see, when you look at the average, uh, a lot of these average days that we have are above that average line, that real faint dashed line across the middle is 11. That's how we're trending, uh, across the year right now.
Are all of the spikes generally weekends?
Yes, sir. That's correct. So taking again, uh, taking a look again at incidents per month, we have that average of 340. Let's see, we were 346, um, in August, uh, for a total of 2,700, uh, incidents. And you can see how that trends with, uh, previous months right here. Here's our year-to-date, uh, 2023, uh, versus total 2022 numbers. And you can see the, uh, 2671 total number in 2022 versus the 2718, just year-to-date in 2023. So, um, an additional 47 runs, just shy of 2% increase on the fire side. Uh, we're down just a little bit, although I have a slide coming up that, that shows that we're creeping up just a little bit with some of the recent smaller fires that we've had. So a pretty good decrease there. And again, finally, the 300 EMS runs, uh, comparing the 2087 to 2231, uh, year-to-date. And I don't know, I think we have Lynn in the back of the room. Lynn, do you want to explain the, the 300 series again, so everyone has that, that information? Again, the three. Lynn, do you mind coming up to the?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Uh, so when, when we talk about the 300 series, that's all basically medically related. So, uh, when, when we respond to a major accident as, as an example, uh, that is kind of a fire and EMS-related call, but all the 300 series are the chest pains, the cardiac, the difficulty breathing and things of that nature from, uh, you know, from a medical standpoint. Uh, and then, and then the other classifications can be a combination of the fire and EMS, uh, or just fire, uh, by itself with the 102.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, moving on to transfers, and don't take a seat yet, Lynn, you might, uh, need to help with this one too. You can see that we have been trending up again over the last several months. Um, can you talk about this just a little bit?
Sure, from a, from a transfer standpoint, we have seen, seen an uptick in those transfers on a monthly basis. Uh, primarily, uh, as, as our discussions with the hospital go, is, is their goal is to keep those patients here. Uh, one of the, the issues that they face are staffing, as many people are, uh, as, as well as additional, uh, specialists in, in certain areas that they can keep, uh, those individuals here. So I know they're working on their staffing plan. I'm not sure when they're going to get there, but they tell us at some point in the future it will get better. Uh, where they're actually keeping those, uh, patients that were currently transferring out to mainly San Antonio, to the Methodist Hospital in San Antonio, or other, uh, uh, from a trauma situation, we take them to the, uh, closest trauma center, uh, depending on the capabilities in those trauma centers in San Antonio. They won't keep those here anyway, we, we have to take.
Thank you, Lynn. Department incidents by day and hour, this is something else that we'd like to show to the council and the public. Uh, it's a heat map, if you will, showing really the, uh, the times that, uh, we see that increased activity through EMS. Um, the hotter the color, red being the hottest, the higher the number. You can see Wednesday, we're fairly calm, uh, but generally trending up over the weekend into the early week. Uh, and if you go back month by month, you can see that that is typically the case. We see a lot more activity on the weekend. I think Lynn, uh, has mentioned in the past, we see about a 30% increase on weekends.
And then you, you, uh, you'll also notice that in some of those cases, if, if the number is earlier in the week, it may be, uh, five of, of those days in the month. Uh, I know where you're par, you're comparing four days on a Saturday here, and on Tuesday, there may have been, may have been five Tuesdays in the month.
I'm just curious about the, if I'm reading the chart right, it, you know, 10 o'clock and 1 o'clock, you have a very high spike, I'm just curious. Lunch rush, I mean, what drives that?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I don't really have an answer for that, uh, other than, uh, when we track our times, this is when typically when the calls come in, and I, there's really nothing that really, you know, hits me in the face that says this is the reason why. It's just, it, it seems like, uh, they come in threes, like we'll get three calls right in a row, and we can have all of our units out and, you know, all of our resources out at one time. one time. But I don't really have an explanation.
Thank you.
It's like people are going to bed a little earlier because they kind of decrease after about 10 o'clock at night.
Okay, moving on, again, we're we're in the fire season. You can see we have had been low on brush fires, but we've we've had that that uptick again through July and and August. Thank goodness for the rain, we're starting to see a little bit of of green out there, but I don't think we're out of the woods yet, fire situation, potential fire situation. Again, just a an incident location by type, fire versus EMS, the fire red, the EMS are blue. You can see where the bulk of the the activity is. And again, as we've talked about this in the past, about 80% of the calls come inside the city limits, 20 outside. We spend 80% of our time driving out into the county, addressing those those issues, about 20% of the total roughly in town. And then incident locations by mutual aid, whether it's aid given, aid received, or or none here, from Harper to Stonewall. We've talked about the Fredericksburg EMS, giving aid to Harper generally. Lynn, Lynn has mentioned 99% of the time, where when you look at at Stonewall, the aid received, they do help us respond to incidents out there. They 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 are out there with us. And again, just a heat map, again, most of the activity going on right here in town. Okay, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
City department openings, again, we started with 18 open positions several several months ago. We have been able to reduce that number down. I will say that we we are closer to being fully staffed in our police department now than ever before, going back 10 years ago, we've been always six to 10 shy. That is where a lot of that budget savings comes from that we see every year. So these are the positions that we currently have open, including, it's either two or three police officers at this point. Then recently filled positions, police cadet or patrol officer, a patrol officer, two animal control officers, and then a parks crew worker that we've recently filled. That's the end of the slideshow, but we did have an additional slide added regarding community outreach. We are on our 13th of 27 or so town hall meetings that I'd mentioned earlier. We've we've had a really good turnout at at the last one, we have another one coming up. For the end of this month, we also had a really good coffee with the city manager last Wednesday. We've got a pretty full house, a couple of council members there, state representative there, and again, a number of good questions coming from the audience. So good turnout, good questions, very respectful, and it's just one of the ways we like to get out in the community and and help answer those questions outside of a regular council meeting. And that concludes my update. Mayor, Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions. All right. Review the future agendas spreadsheet. Items for future agendas. Okay, for our next regular council meeting coming up, October 3rd, we do have a number of street closure requests. Anything to add on these specifically, Andrea?
Resolution approving the assignment of the annexation agreement for Fredericksburg Hospitality Development, Phil Pete Garrett.
Yeah, so the Hotel Conference Center developer has requested that. Basically, they purchased the property last November, so this is just a legal matter to change the name on the annexation agreement to the new developer. It doesn't impact any of the the previous agreements or their responsibilities under the agreement. This is the Hotel Conference Center tract, the Y. Yes.
The Mews.
Correct.
I skipped one, the big one, STR ordinance amendment, public hearing. And then finally, consideration of changes to municipal court operations, including administrative adjudication process and fine structure.
Will the STR amendment, that's also discussion, public hearing and discussion, or just?
It is a public hearing and set for action as well. And anyone can go to the STR webpage right now and see P&amp;Z's recommendation. So that's kind of a bullet point of their recommendation. And then we are expecting the red line version to be released to us tomorrow, and then we'll get that up on the webpage as well. So that'll be available before the actual city council packet is available. So I encourage people to go to the STR webpage.
Is the red line based on P&amp;Z's recommendation?
Yes, yes. And then staff will evaluate that and have a whole presentation similar to we did to what we had for P&amp;Z with with more information, code enforcement data and such.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, would you like to keep the affordable housing item on this agenda?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That is it for the October 3rd meeting, unless you have anything to add.
Anything else, Council, on the future agenda?
All right, we're at the end of the agenda. Anything further?
Counselor? Just another sincere thanks to our citizens, staff, for all the hard work that's gone on for the past few months. I've seen a lot of articles that paint a picture that quite frankly didn't reflect the amount of work and effort and energy by everybody, so I just wanted to thank everybody involved. Thank you.
RT second. Anything else? All right, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.